I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, Thursday, July 14, 2016. Please rise and pay your respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Secretary, please note the role.
Noted.
We have a quorum. Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, July 14, 2016, as presented.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Berger. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, June 9, 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, a regular meeting minutes of the Planning Commission from June 9, 2016, as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Berger. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda? Is anybody in the public wishing to speak? Young lady in the back. Are you playing Pokemon Go? Okay, good. All right, just checking. We'll move on to item seven, Commissioner's comments. Let's start down with Mr. Hunwick.
I have no comment.
Caught you off guard, didn't I? Yeah, Mr. Hung.
None at this time.
Mr. Spiz?
None at this time.
Ms. Berger?
I have no comment.
Holy smokes. I know, Ms. Berger.
Sorry, I'm breaking the...
I knew. I knew better.
It relates to what happened yesterday. I kind of got drugged there, but at the township board meeting, a bunch of neighbors came, and this was about newspaper articles in Oxford Leader about the House of Providence, which is a child foster care institution. And what was written in the articles is that they're going to, actually, they have bought a 118-acre parcel in the northeast corner of the township that is owned agriculture. And what was written in the newspaper was that they're going to be putting that institution there. And so, there was a lot of concern about that, that it doesn't meet the area and meet the spirit in attendance. One of the people had asked me to look at where would it go, like, where would that be a use and allowed use? So, I started looking it up, and we have foster homes addressed in our ordinance and where they can go for special land use and irregular use, and everything is pretty much in the R1 through R3 district. Nowhere in the ordinance that I could see do we have anything listed for foster care institution. And the foster care institution, from what I was told by the state, is the type of use that the local community actually can control. We don't have a lot of control over the private homes and the private group homes, but we do have control over institutions. So, I'm just throwing that out there because I could not see anywhere in our ordinance where it would specify that would be allowed use.
Okay. All right, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Curtis?
Last night at the Township Board, preliminary approval for the North Oakland Woods condo development was given. The Township Board requested a Knox box breakaway fence at the access, or the gate, or, let me back up, a Knox box or breakaway firegate on the Bar Road access. They recommended that the engineer take that to the developer and have a flavor for that. They went ahead and did approve the condo site, but they asked the engineer to go back and see if he can make that fit there, so there's not, there is a limited access to Bar Road.
Okay.
The concern was that Bar Road is unsafe in that area with hills and overgrown and very rural road. So, when it comes to final site plan, we were asked to look and see that, if they did that or not.
Did they get their variances?
Yep.
Both? The no gravel and the length?
No, they didn't ask for gravel.
They didn't ask for gravel, they're going to pay.
Okay. Oh, I thought they asked for, okay.
Nope.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. I don't have anything. Public hearings, none, unfinished business, none. Final site plan, M.D. Hubbard Spring. Applicant? Mr. Ted, I can see you're here. I'll give you your choice of how you want to proceed, Mr. Taylor, since this is final, we've already seen it in preliminary. Do you want to just answer the questions in the consultant's letters? Would you like to do that, or would you like to give us a brief overview? How do you want to proceed?
Well, one of the things we'd like to do is ask, and all I can do is ask. We submitted the drawings and the plans were done, landscaping done for the ordinance, but after looking at it and then reviewing that with the owner, I don't know if this board could do this to approve a site plan, not particularly approving the landscaping, to give us time to see if we could do a landscape drawing different than shown and take it to the zoning board for an appeal to the number of park, the number of trees and the number of shrubs that are put on the site in accordance with the ordinance, because the building is set back so far from the road, it's not like sitting on M24. Nobody is going back there to see these trees and shrubs, et cetera. And some of the other items is that we have some of the trees that are going to be planted over the gas line reading, going into the building, and we could work out some shrubs or something, but I don't know if you can do this, so I'm asking if that is possible.
Well, I, Mr. Otman, I believe, I think he stated something incorrectly. He doesn't have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a variance on landscaping. We can do that here, right?
That's correct. You have the ability to deviate.
All right. But a deviation of that, and I'm sensing an order of magnitude here, not, we're not talking about a little bit.
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I felt, that, I wanted you to say it, because I felt it. If that's going to be your route, I would suggest that maybe we postpone this until you come back with a, you guys agree upon a landscape plan, then you bring it back and put it in front of the planner for review, because I don't want to get into a meeting tonight of going through the schedule and saying, no, six, two, no, 18, make it one. I don't want to do that, because we're all going to lose track. I'd rather have it on a plan and rather have it identified, unless this Planning Commission feels it's necessary that we uphold every component of the ordinance as far as the landscaping requirements for this site.
So, you taking opinions?
I'm taking opinions.
You know, I agree to a certain respect if they're going over gas lines. That I could understand, but I got a feeling it's more than just one or two.
I've got that, I'm getting that sense, too.
So therefore, yeah, moving forward on this plan is probably obsolete.
I would, I would say we're wasting everybody's time, would be my opinion. Board, commission, anybody else?
I'd rather see an amended plan, because I've already looked at this plan, and I'm not saying that there aren't places where there couldn't be reduction, but I don't know the extent of what they're really talking about.
Well, and I don't either, but I'm getting a sense that it's major, and what I don't want to do is, this...
I'm not going to sit here and try and...
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to design a site plan. That's not our job here. We're here to approve plans and help you put a development together, so I would suggest that we could make a motion to postpone until further time that you submit a revised landscape plan to go in your package.
Well, how much time do they need?
One more question.
But, I'm going to leave it up to the applicant. He may need a month, he may need three months. I don't know what he needs.
Yeah, we'll have to look at it and go over with a landscaped architect and with Mr. Hubbard and get a score taken away. What I'm also hoping is that with Mr. Berger, that we can possibly get the permit to get this building started, the building itself.
Well, I would have trouble without an approved site plan, just based on the policies of the township. I can't circumvent those myself. I don't have that authority. Wow. I don't, I don't have your, a good answer for you tonight. I cannot do that.
The last, how about, how about if we, how about if we act on the site plan that's presented, and if they, we'll leave, we'll leave, yes, we'll divide it up, take the landscaping, we'll just say that the landscaping is not approved on this plan, the applicant must submit back to us, and that plan must be approved before any building erection can go on. They can start grading, footings, utilities, but a building can't go up until that plan is...
I'd like to ask Mr. Otman a question. Brian, if someone has to amend a site plan, amend it, what are the, if this site plan got approved tonight, the way it is presented, and then they want to come back and amend the site plan, only to amend the landscaping, what kind of process do they have to go through?
They have to file a new application, pay all new fees, yes. That's why I'm trying to keep it...
I'm trying to stay that way, too.
Yeah, I mean, they have to start the process over.
Yeah, so we can't...
I wondered about that.
That's why, to save them money, that's why I wanted to do a split here. That's why I was going down that road.
Sure, when's our next meeting?
28th, if we had one, but they couldn't get it in.
They couldn't get it in time, because we got to give them the reviews.
They have to go into the next month.
Right. It'd have to be into August. The first, first meeting in August would be the 13th or whatever the day is.
That gives them four weeks, three weeks.
I guess, I guess.
But they're, but they're losing prime construction time, and I understand where they're going, is they don't want to get into the fall and winter trying to put a building up.
Mr. Chair, may I ask another question? I understand that it might be tight. There's no way we could squeeze in another review if they commit to get their plan into us by next week? We can't get it done for them? I mean, we're trying to do things quickly, but...
But you'd have to have a special meeting.
No, if we're going to do one on the 28th.
No, 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 if we're going to have one on the 28th.
Because if the only thing you're going to change is the landscape plan, I'm sure, you know, everybody's going to want to re-review it just to make sure everything else is the same, but most of the focus will be on this plan, not on everything else, because they've already reviewed it. So, it shouldn't take the same amount of time to do a re-review. Just my two cents.
Of course, hold on. Mr. Otman, a course of action, how do you, what's your opinion on how to, the best way to proceed?
Well, I think that, unfortunately, I don't think the applicant's going to like this, but I think you have to postpone it. I mean, because, you know, if we try and split this up, the more, the more I think about that, we try and split this up, they still have to get engineering review completed. You know, they're not going to apply for a building permit and get it tomorrow if they get approved tonight. You know, there's engineering that has to be finalized, you know, so I just don't know how we can do this. I mean, I thought, I was thinking initially to split them and just have them come back for, you know, a landscape plan approval, but that, I mean, I'm sure we could do that, but that's not the best way to handle it, because then we've got multiple sets of drawings that are, have approval dates that are different.
Ted, is there any way you could get this into us by submittal by Wednesday of next week, so Brian's got a date of review, and then they can get the packet, you can get a packet out, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You'll try.
Can you do that? Otherwise, you're going, you'll lose two additional weeks on that.
Yeah.
And you'll be to the end of the month. Or beginning of August, sorry.
Yeah.
And we're trying to work with you, Ted, I just don't know how to, with the time.
I need to...
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I want to ask something that doesn't really relate to the plan itself from a site plan's line of view. Do you already have all your construction documents in order?
Yeah, they're in the office.
Okay, so they're in the office, waiting for site plan approval to move forward with the permit.
I just...
All right, we haven't moved forward on the, on the construction documents.
No, I have, I'm doing it tomorrow.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know that yet. Okay.
And I haven't seen any engineering.
Yeah, I mean, they could get started on that.
You can run, you can run that, they can run that concurrently with their own risk.
Hold on, one at a time. Okay.
They can run that concurrently, so if their engineer wants to submit engineering plans for review at their own risk, knowing that they don't have an approved site plan, then we can certainly start reviewing that.
All right, as a, as a straw poll, to give the applicant comfort, does anybody see a reason why this would get denied as a final site plan, understanding that the landscape is in question? Leave that, leave that off to the side. Anybody on the Planning Commission see that?
You're saying side from landscaping?
Hold on, I'm trying to, aside from landscaping. Does anybody see, or, hold on, Jack, I'm trying to get a straw poll here.
I'm not saying nothing.
Well, I'd like you to say something. I'd like you to say, no, you don't see a problem with approving the site plan.
Well, I was going to say, can't we administratively approve the landscape plan?
No, because it's going to be a, if he does, he's got to hold him to the letter of the law.
Okay.
And if, we're the only ones that can make that deviation from landscaping. So, anybody got an issue with the site plan being approved other than landscaping? All right, so you got a comfort level that you're probably going to get your approval, but the landscaping plan is the thing in question, right? So, I would, I would, I'd run the gamble of, of running concurrent with your engineering, get this landscape tweaked, get it in as soon as you can. If you meet our deadlines, we'll get you to the next available planning commission as quick as we can.
Okay.
And if it, if the packets don't come out, usually, we like to have the weekend to review the packets. If the packets don't come out till 24 hours before the meeting, does anybody have a problem with that? Nope.
For 48.
Two days, 48 hours?
Yeah. Just for theirs.
Just for their item, just for this item, not, not, we're not making special condition or anything else, just their item. Anybody see our issue with that?
No.
All right, so if you can get yours, Brian, what do you need, a date of review?
At most.
If you can get your packet in by, let me, let me get my calendar and back up days here.
Would it be...
The 21st?
Trying to help you, Ted, here, as best I can.
Would it be better to sit down with Ryan and landscape architect and the owners?
No.
No.
You know, um...
24 hours before the meeting, so you need to get them in, close the business Monday the 25th.
Okay.
The best thing you can do is have your landscape architect break it down on the plan in terms of what you're deviating from. He, he did a good job of laying out all the, all the vegetation, which I thought was, you know, very nice.
Yeah.
You know, so, but the problem is, is you need to show us what you're deviating from, so it's got to be broken down, kind of like the table of, here's what we've got for greenbelt and parking lot. Okay, this is what, these are the deviations we're asking for, so the Planning Commission can understand it and we're just not wasting time, our office counting trees and, you know, trying to figure it all out.
Right. Okay.
Can that be done?
Sure.
So, close the business, whoops, I just lost it.
Really?
Close the business the 25th, they got to be in, in order to be heard on the 28th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay.
Well...
Right?
Should really be the...
Friday, you mean?
No, it should really be the 22nd.
22nd on Friday.
Friday, 22nd?
Yeah, we need them by Friday.
Close the business Friday?
No, I'd prefer to have them by opening of business on Friday, so really, Thursday night.
Well, that's what I said originally, then everybody wanted me to back up some days, so.
No.
Close the business the 21st.
That gives you a week.
We should be able to do it, if we start tomorrow.
I would make a phone call on my way out of here.
Right.
All right, so I need a motion to, to postpone Hubbard Spring.
I'll make a motion to postpone the Hubbard Spring final site plan approval for parcel ID number 04-26-303-008 and-009-565-South Wapier Road.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Berger, on what grounds and what
Due to the landscape architect's plan not meeting the owner's requirements, and we will have an amended landscape plan by July 20...
What?
21st.
21st.
21st at 9:00 a.m.
No, close the business on 21st? Nope, right. Oh, close the business.
Close the business 21st.
On the 21st. I'll amend my motion.
You amend your support?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's clear enough. I'll amend my support. I think what he said was a little different than the way I would have said it.
You clear on the motion? Anybody not clear on the motion? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good luck.
Mr. Bell?
Thanks.
Yes.
Are they resubmiting in, in the entire set of drawings or just the landscape?
They have to resubmit a whole entire packet.
A whole package?
Yep.
So, I would ask that some of the comments that were in the consultant reviews, maybe your engineer can address those with that review as well.
Good time to do so.
Yeah. I think they got it done.
Huh?
I think they got it done.
They probably do. It wasn't very different.
That will expedite your engineering, right, going forward, your construction, because you're going to work on that concurrently also, so, all right?
Yeah, that's, do you want us to resubmit all those drawings or just the site plan Yeah, that's, you want us to resubmit all those drawings or just the site plan drawing and vice versa?
I want all, I need a whole new site plan packet resubmitted, complete.
Permit?
No, no, not permit, no, 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 just site plan drawings. Okay. CJ be gone. Communications violation report, everybody got it?
Yes.
See all the new violations? Acreage lot split, guys had a meeting?
We did have a meeting, which I don't think Mr., not everybody knew about the meeting, I guess, in the time they...
Well, somebody was on vacation.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it was for the property where Tractor Supply Company wants to go.
Yep.
And so that is in the process of being done now because it was approved for the split.
Okay.
And I don't know if civil numbers are forthcoming or not, I guess.
They are, they're already on property gateway.
Okay, they're already on property gateway, so now they are diligently trying to move their plan forward, and I had a conversation, we don't need to go into that now.
Okay. Economic Development Subcommittee?
We did not have a meeting in July. I have a meeting scheduled for August third.
Travel Inspection, nothing. Ordinance Review Subcommittee, I gave a mandate
A mandate?
At last meeting that you guys would get together and have agreed upon schedules of when you're gonna start your meetings.
We did have a meeting.
Oh, you met?
Yeah, we had a meeting on...
You even circum, you even went beyond my mandate.
Yeah.
We have a whole list?
Well, wait, wait, we got into numerous discussions. We think that obviously we have limited funds, so we gotta try and be careful. We will put a list together, I believe, what would be maybe, and if we are gonna have a meeting soon again, which we might.
Put it on the twenty-eighth.
And put it on the twenty-eighth, so you guys can kind of look and say, I feel I have priorities that I think should be looked at first, and each member kind of had some of their own priorities, so...
Well, wait a minute, first, this PC has given Bri, all this PC has given Brian a list of major ones that we need to get done, it goes on your list.
And he has, he has that list too, to include our list.
Okay, fine.
But we don't think we should try to do things that maybe not everybody would support.
I agree.
So we're gonna present that to you and then kind of go from there.
Let's bring that list in the next meeting, if you don't mind. Let's talk about the low-hanging fruit ones.
Yeah.
And then the more complicated ones, all right?
And then we won't, we won't be wasting time in, really.
Right, right, perfect. Good plan.
We need to discuss too, what we just found, because it sounds like there's gonna be an...
Well, that's another issue altogether right now, but we gotta get our list together from our previous meeting. We did have a meeting, and so we are gonna present a list.
Okay.
And then we can add to it or...
Yeah, yeah, you can add to it, right, whatever.
Yeah.
Let's just start with the list, and we'll work our way through it.
Is there an upcoming lot split meeting?
A what meeting?
Lot split.
No, not right now.
Nothing scheduled yet?
No. Well, not that I know of.
I don't know.
Nothing's been submitted before lot split.
Right.
Right. And I don't think we have anything on the twenty-eighth other than this coming back, right?
Okay.
And truthfully, if you're wondering about a certain lot split...
I got an email that there was something submitted, so there was not.
There's nothing that's been submitted.
Okay.
And that certain lot split that you're speaking of would need a private road, so...
Okay, just the email said it was submitted, that's why I was confused, okay.
Great.
Yeah. All right, Safety Path Maintenance Committee, nothing to report. Water Sewer?
Lots to report. Number one, the Water Sewer Committee has recommended to delay the Lake Villa water main until the spring construction season.
Wow.
And I'm gonna tell you a few of the reasons why.
We were gonna ask that, so I'm glad you are.
Number one, there is a formal request from Crossroads for youth to become part of the water district due to some DEQ requirements made on them. So now with this change in direction of the water line, and we have a meeting with Crossroads on the twentieth to discuss inclusion or non-inclusion to that, and the plan, and to also supply future Lake Tullamore in that area, there's a lot of work that has to be done to make this thing be done right. And the longer we go into these discussions, the more delay the start of school is coming, and we're gonna be tearing up a road that leads in and out of the middle school, number two. Number three, right now, if you try to bid construction jobs, you are on the very high side of the quotes.
Because everybody's busy?
Everybody's busy.
Okay.
So with that, there was a poll taken, and the Water Sewer Committee recommended to delay it. We're working with the WRC to ensure that the water supply at Lake Villa Mobile Home Park continues, and at a monumental rate, we're gonna move forward with design, which is almost a hundred percent complete. We're gonna start pulling permits because the permits will be valid for a year. We're gonna continue working towards starting the project, but in a more cost-effective and efficient use of our time and monies.
Is that it?
No, I see a hand up, I was waiting.
Just a question, I remember originally when this area was looked at, the whole point was to take it up through Tullamore through the back way, which was a lot cheaper and a lot, because we had sized the Drainer Road service appropriately. So if Crossroads comes through, which connects, is this going to be a savings? It seems that we won't have to put a modern line down Lakeville.
It gets us, no, it gets, right, no, it gets us closer to a looping system. It will still come down Lakeville across the school grounds property to the backside of Lake Villa into Crossroads, and that gets us that much closer to the Drainer looping system.
You can't loop through Crossroads and then around?
Yeah, I think the plan right now is, we're gonna come down Lakeville, we're gonna come through the middle school, and it stops there, kind of at the Crossroads property. By including Crossroads, now that, we're...
Originally, we never had to use Lakeville to get that into plan, that's why I'm wondering, you can't come from Drainer and around and loop back to Drainer?
No, it was always, the looping plan was to go all the way to the end of Lake Villa Mobile, the easternly portion of Lake Villa, and then come back up Lakeville Road.
I'd never come down Lakeville, the original plan.
I can, we can, I can discuss it with you maybe after the meeting a little bit more, I can show you the plan.
You have the graphics?
I do have that with me tonight.
Because I thought that's where the most of the expense was, was Lakeville.
Oh, you ain't seen nothing yet.
Well, I mean, when we, when we looked at it, I remember, we did a lot of research on it, we never had planned to go down Lakeville, it was to come from Drainer north and loop back. And when that subdivision didn't go through, that put a nix on it, but now we've got another connector.
I'll discuss it with you after the meeting here.
Since then, even in my term. The second thing is water rate increase. A letter from the WRC was to inform us that our water rates to the water supply system, the charge would remain at thirty-four dollars for the first one-point-five-thousand cubic feet, fifteen-hundred cubic feet of water. Anything above fifteen-hundred cubic feet of water will now be charged at a dollar per hundred or a dollar thirty per hundred versus one dollar per hundred, and that charge will be effective July first.
What's the average house yield?
We're working on those details right now.
Questions were asked last night to, the board couldn't answer.
We were hit with this, and we had to respond at a Water Sewer Committee meeting. The board asked the same question last night. Very good question tonight, we are working on it with the county. We're trying to be proactive rather than to go against our ordinance and deplete our cap fee funds. So we're trying to get that increase into place July first.
Anything else? Do you want some more? Mr. Spiz has a question.
Mr. Curtis, was that water or sewer rates?
Water.
Just trying to think, where do we get water from the city of Detroit?
We don't.
We don't. Okay, that's what I thought.
I didn't say city of Detroit, it's WRC. They do our billing.
They do our billing, but...
We do our water with WRC, they do all our maintenance to our system, they do all the supplies. The cost of producing that water, over fifteen-hundred cubic feet, which is the normal charge of thirty-four dollars. Above fifteen-hundred cubic feet, it's going from a dollar to a dollar thirty for any hundred feet above the fifteen-hundred.
I'm confused now.
I'm confused.
Okay, it's a graduated scale for produce the water, it costs more money to produce more water, yes.
But they're...
But if we're paying to create it...
Yeah, they're a service to us.
I didn't hear.
They're a service, we pay them to do a service for us.
Yes.
They manage our water system here in the township, right?
Yes.
So I would, it's been a while, but I would tend to believe we were under a certain contract with them to do that, and I'm kind of surprised it's by water flow, because I'm not sure how that matters to them.
The volume of water, to maintain the volume of water that we're using, above the fifteen-hundred cubic feet is gone up to maintain that amount of water. So they've requested an increase, and we're granting it.
Did we challenge it?
We challenge all of our rates and contracts.
If they have to come out and fix something, do they bill us, or is that included?
No, they come out.
So they bill us, but then they also charge us, I don't understand.
They charge us, they charge us for contracted services, but they also charge us for unforeseen contracted services. Broken pumps, broken wells, more chlorine being added, more ozone added, more this added, all the things that are added. Above the volume, it's increased in cost, so we are having to pay that increase in cost.
I don't think that the increase in cost is because of the WRC fees that they are charging the township. It is for, like you say, just some replacements, you know, that have had to occur, electrical costs increase, you know, things of that nature that...
Operation and maintenance cost has increased above that fifteen-hundred cubic feet level.
Well, they could come back and almost say any price, right? Who else are we gonna go to?
You can go to Richland, is that who does the village? You could go to Hartland, I think it is, it does the village. There's a bunch of them.
Was that copied on that letter, by the way?
Yes, the Honorable Michael Spiz.
Honorable?
Yeah, I know it, Oakland County Commissioner.
You got the wrong guy, hold on.
Must be his cousin.
I must be mistaken, I thought it was relative to Glee Wa.
Well, that's why you didn't get it.
Yeah.
That's his cousin.
All right, we could ask, anyway, I just brought that to your attention, there's a lot of activity going on. We have well houses that are sinking, we have pumps that aren't working, we are, we have our hands full with our engineers and the WRC to keep our water system going. I have a little other good news for you, Todd.
You got anything else?
No, I'm all there. Turn the paper over.
Just looking at this commission and just wondering, how many are on the water system?
Twenty, was it twenty-nine-hundred?
Maybe the chairman.
I see just the chair is the only one.
Yeah.
Guess I oughta put my own well in.
You better hurry up, the ordinance will be changing.
Nobody will ever know I put my own well in.
Oh, yes.
There's no penalty for violating an ordinance, is there? What's the penalty?
Jail for you.
Paper here and there.
Just checking. Zoning Board of Appeals?
I think I got shot as the messenger tonight.
Obviously, with the last meeting, you've got that result already. This last Monday's was canceled. August, the regular meeting is canceled, we have a special meeting the Monday after, and I believe that is the legacy sign someone they can make out from the description.
Sound right, Brian? Legacy sign coming to ZB A?
Sign, signs...
The paintings and all of that?
Yes, it's, the sign package is what is going to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
For a special meeting in August?
Yes.
Yes. So bring your calculator, maybe you should.
Okay.
All right, that's it?
Whiteboard.
Is that it?
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, Village Planning Commission?
A ongoing review of the Village Master Plan, they have it broken down. The last meeting, they reviewed the northeast quadrant of the village and the Village Parks and Rec Plan. The next meeting is next Tuesday, July nineteenth? Yeah, and I haven't seen the, I just got the agenda today.
Okay, anything else? Nope. Okay, Mr. Otman?
Just to give you an update on the master plan process, we've completed a draft of the background studies at this point. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks, we can provide that to you in your packets, just for a quick look at. Otherwise, we are just prepping for the workshop.
Okay, have we put it, have we decided on a date yet?
Yeah, I think it was, I forgot.
First meeting in August.
It is in August, yeah, it's in my calendar.
Okay.
It's eleven, it's about, isn't it?
Okay.
First meeting, yep.
Mr. Sharp, anything else you want to hang yourself with tonight?
I'd be quiet. Nothing to report unless anybody has any questions about the development projects that are out there right now.
All right, anybody? Bueller? I do. What's going on up there on the, behind Myers and the school? How they doing on their utilities?
They have their sanitary sewer was approved, and that was forwarded to the state of Michigan for their final permits there. Water main, they had issues with, and actually, they just resubmitted the plans this afternoon. So just the normal process going from us to the WRC to the state of Michigan will probably be at least another three weeks to, you know, three weeks to a month before we would have a reconstruction, assuming that the permit gets approved.
Sanitary going to the east?
Sanitary is currently coming to the west, down to...
Thought we didn't have capacity to come down there.
We do not have ultimate capacity, we have existing capacity. So there's gonna be a sanitary sewer agreement that is put in place with the stipulation of, I don't know what the...
Percent build?
The township and the township and the developer have agreed to.
Okay.
But the recommendation was for three years, to allow that to occur for three years, at which point they would have to divert it over to the east. And they are putting up a cash bond in the amount of over five-hundred thousand dollars for that to occur.
Okay, great. Roads?
Roadways for that development. As far as I know with the attorney, the private road has been worked out.
Any construction on the roads?
No, because they need to get the utilities in first.
Well, that's what I'm, that's where I'm going.
Yep, yep.
Any, any, did we release any, because they've been doing earthwork, so is there any land balancing? There's been no foundation permits issued then, right, if utilities are not in, sir?
Mr. Berger can...
No, they have, they have a foundation permit.
The township did allow that.
Without roads and utilities?
Mr. Dunn went to the attorney, and they came to an agreement. I'm not privy to the agreement, other than the fact that there was money put in in lieu of. So I guess I can't answer that question as to how they acquired it, it's foundation only. There's no vertical that's supposed to take place, only horizontal.
Okay.
Yep, they're putting in the foundations, and
That's odd.
Again, they did put up a, I don't know what the agreement was, but some sizable bond, and the event that the, you know, everything went to hell again, the economy did, and the township had to take out the...
I've never, I've never seen that done without roads put in, never.
They're putting in a stone, they're putting in their stone base, but no asphalt.
Wow, okay. That's the only questions I had, thank you. Anybody else for Mr. Sharp? Seeing none, I move we adjourn at seven forty.